Here you hear you, Corporal Harman, County Attorney, Honorable Mayor Todd Fols, beside me. May God bless the United States of America, the state of Tennessee, and the honorable for. Please remain standing for our prayer pledge. Commissioner Brad Grant will lead us in prayer. Please pray with me. Lord, we come to you tonight in prayer and thank you for the love and blessings you have bestowed upon us. We ask that you be with this commission tonight and guide our decisions with your divine wisdom. We pray that you will comfort, be with those who have lost loved ones, be with the sick, the elderly, and keep them safe from harm. We pray you shed your love and grace upon our families, healthcare workers, world leaders, law enforcement, firefighters, teachers, and the whole world. We pray for your forgiveness of our sins and lead us on the path of righteousness. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Permission on the news.
Face flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, no worries, we see. About a third for which we have another one following this.
Dale.
Here.
Bubber.
Here.
Deverry.
Here.
Yavin.
Here.
Gillum.
Here.
Granton.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
Kennamore.
Here.
Lake.
Here.
Lanier.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Same.
Here.
Dickers.
Here.
Wings.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
All right, is anybody on the public forum that has signed up? There is. All right, we have one on our public forum, Mr. Shelton. Yeah, Bruce Minnits on our public forum.
No worries.
You're the one who's got the spare one.
I'm the one who's going to get out of here before the big storm hits, so I'll be brief. I'll try to get to the point really quick. First of all, thank you, good evening, Commissioner and Mr. Mayor. Thank you for allowing me to speak. More than you know, I appreciate what you do, I do. As you know, most of the contentious things that end up, from our desk, end up in front of y'all. And y'all can deal with so much more so, more so than any of y'all are lengthy officials, which I respect huge. And you are the governor body of our county, which is, which is a navigate us through all kinds of obstacles. Reasoning out here tonight, as any of you didn't know, again, I'm Andy Shelton. I'm a member of Harman County Planning Commission, have been since April of 2022. Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Deverry have been on that committee with me during that process. As they will certainly contest to, we have plenty of contentious issues. Obviously, when you tell people what they can't do, it's their property to easily spur something on. However, you know, reasoning out here, as you, as you know, Mr. Mitchell is, he's in front of you as a potential replacement for the BCA bump forward replacement. Mr. Mitchell, he's, he's been gracious enough to, if, if affirmed, sit in this position. He has a unique, very unique resume that spanned forty-plus years in construction. And in that time, he deals with all the stuff that we deal with on a monthly basis as it relates to zoning. And I would argue probably as a place to the codes that we have, knows that, you know, those who prepare them. I just, again, speaking on his behalf, and, and just take consideration of his resume, certainly we will, we will work with whoever. I don't know Mr. Simpson, and I hear he's a great guy. And certainly not up here to disparage or speak ill of him, first and foremost. But again, my teammate experience, he, as you well know, we've had, since I've been on the board, we've had one of our six against us. I think he would help us navigate instances where that might come into play. And again, few commissioners have reached out to me to give my opinion about this, and that's why I said. Again, thank you for what you do. I invite each and every one of you to our planning commission meetings whenever, you know, you have the opportunity to come. It's, we'd love to see y'all support and fair, especially, you know, just, y'all have constituents that you gotta answer to. It's important for them to know what we're going through and, and that sort of thing. Again, thank you for your time. I appreciate it, and you're welcome.
Thank you, Andy. All right, let's move into her order. Next up, approval of amendments from January 1st.
I have a question, Mayor.
Sure.
This is Mr. Congress. Since it's not signed by both parties, does that make any difference on the amendments? Is it just signed by the mayor and the county court clerk?
They used to be signed by both. They're both signed. I don't know why Chris is sitting around, but you have this.
I just asked was it legal and this what we have in front of us?
Make motion for approval.
Say it.
Motion pending, eight minutes. All right, I'll move to the right, please, city, find the same.
Ah.
All vote in our side. All right, talk about our notaries that we have in front of us. Do y'all have those? Move to be approved.
Second.
Motion pending, eight minutes. Those who favor you approve. Those who see you plan to sign? Before we go into our next slide, just real quick, we'll go into our county official reports. I want to say it's good to see you, Ms. Amber. Thank you for coming. Thank you for being on the board. All right, let's move into our county officials' reports. We're going to go ahead and call Josh up. Josh Fols? All right, we'll get the computer up and I'll do some of the here just to... Yes. Well, we may not. I can't get your password to put it in. All right. And we do have noted, yes, from C-Task, there's with us, Josh, I'm just here showing you. So we've been together the last few days in Nashville and talking about a few of these items we're going to bring up tonight to on these resolutions, so. What's, what's that lady's name? Yeah, let me go ahead and ask Mr. Joe Griffin to come up and we'll work on that while we're doing this. Mr. Joe Griffin is with C-Task. I think everyone's familiar with C-Task, County Technical Assistance Services. What we're going to be talking about tonight is going from a five-year reappraisal to a four-year reappraisal. Tom Troller from Muntower was going to be here tonight, but he could not be here. Some last minute changes happened, so we're trying to get him on a Zoom call, basically a team meeting where he can address the commission as well. While I'm trying to work on the computer, maybe you can talk about the reappraisal.
Welcome, Joe. Thank you. Thank y'all for taking time to listen to this. You're currently in a five-year reappraisal cycle. I think last time I was here, I explained on some of these longer distances between reappraisals that you have some issues come up and we have to have a sales ratio. Sales ratios are required in between reappraisals. And currently, if you're on a five or six-year cycle, you have two sales ratios. The first sales ratio happens two years after you reappraise. And the definition is, when you reappraise, all values are a hundred percent of market value. And then as time goes on from that reappraisal, the market continues to grow or decline. Recently, it's been skyrocketing. So right now, after your first ratio, it's looking like, I think Josh has the numbers, it's looking like y'all are probably going to have a ratio of around eighty percent. What that means is, your appraisals are twenty percent below the market on average. That's all your parcels, your commercial, your farm, residential, all things together. If you have a second ratio, which would be two years after that, it's going to be reduced by even more. It could be fifty-five, sixty percent. We've got some this year I think we're going to have in the high forties. That ratio gets applied to your personal property accounts that are through the commercial assessments, and it also gets applied to your state assessed property. So those two categories are reduced. It reduces your budget that you had from the previous year. The worst thing it does is it also takes money away from our veterans and the disabled and the elderly that get tax relief. It reduces the amount they get by that ratio. So if they got a hundred dollars, normally, they would only get eighty under this ratio. And under the next ratio, they would get somewhere between fifty and sixty dollars. So what we're at proposing, or is proposing, is to go from a five-year to a four-year. We're modifying the current plan. Last year, the comptroller got the law passed where they can decouple the visual inspection. Josh has to look at all the properties. You know, when, currently, or under last year's law, he had to look at them all within the reappraisal cycle. Now it's decoupled where you can look at both of them separately. He can constantly be doing visual and then every four years do a reappraisal. So he doesn't foresee on the onset of this any additional cost of accounting for doing. And the benefit is, we won't have to do that second ratio in two years. It greatly reduces the budget.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Come, Troller Muntowers, good to see you, sir.
Yes, it's a day here.
All right, you're, you're on now with our Harman County Commission, and we'd like to welcome you. And we know that you have some information for us about the reappraisal and the reappraisal cycle. So I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you very much, y'all, for being a Harman County for allowing me to participate in your meeting tonight virtually. At one point in time, I did plan to fly out to Harman County tonight, and I guess probably better we didn't do that. I don't know if it started snowing there, it's not yet started snowing here in Nashville. I'm sitting in the Capitol Building, but we're all in for interesting weather tonight. I'm very glad to be with you tonight because I very much want to tell you, I like the idea that you're contemplating about shorting your reappraisal cycle. It is the right thing to do. It is the right thing to do for your taxpayers, your residential homeowners, your agricultural landowners. And we're coming online. I heard the discussion about the sales ratio that has had to be applied to assessments across Tennessee over the past couple of years. And, and the shorter the cycle, the less severe that it's going to be. So moving in the direction of a shorter cycle is an excellent idea. I hope you will unanimously approve it. We will work with your assessor to ensure things go smoothly on this end. We will work to reduce your certified tax rate at the end of your reappraisal. Again, I think it's the right thing. You're actually the third county I have spoken to this week about moving to a shorter cycle. One of the counties I spoke to is my own home county of Sullivan. I'm excited that this Thursday, Sullivan County, my home, is going to move to a shorter cycle. And I commend you all to take it up and to do it tonight. I'll be glad to travel through any questions at all. Just say that I'm very glad to be able to fit with you.
Thank you, Tom Troller Muntower. Appreciate you. It's good to see you yesterday, sir.
Yes, glad to see you here and hope to see y'all over soon.
Does anyone have any questions for the comptroller? Looks like we have any questions, sir. So it looks like so.
Well, you're, you're an easy group. You all let me know later how it goes. So again, I commend you for this positive statement, and thank you all for letting me be with you virtually tonight. Thank you.
I have a question.
We do, we do have a question. Hold on just a second. Commissioner Lee.
Hi. I would like to ask, if we do not, no, okay, let me back up. You said it would be in our best interest to shorten our reappraisal cycle because it'll, it'll affect our home owners, commercial property, all the property owners and everything. You said so it would be best interest for us to go with a shorter term?
Could you hear everything, sir?
I, I really did not hear anything, so I would be glad.
She, she asked if, if what you were saying was, it's in our best interest for landowners, property owners, commercial property owners to shorten the reappraisal term from a year to a four-year? I guess she's just wanting to confirm that that's what you are, are saying.
Yes, yes, I, I do believe it is. I particularly, for your, for your homeowners, your, your property, your, your home property owners, your residents, I absolutely believe it's the best thing. And if you have a good experience here, as a matter of fact, I think in the future it'll be better to shorten it even more. But I think you're starting down the right path enough.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Questions? Okay.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you after the night.
Okay, so getting down to the nuts of both of y'all, we met the Commissioner of Meere, the chairman of the Budget Committee, Mayor Fols, Mayor Muntzey. When our ratio hits this year, we as a county stand lose roughly three hundred thousand dollars just off this sales ratio. Sales ratio will also be applied next year. That's another three hundred thousand plus. If we shorten this to go to a twenty-seven year, we're taking away that second ratio, which based on the numbers that we're seeing across the state, could be anywhere from point five, point six, somewhere in that ballpark. Meaning instead of losing roughly twenty percent right now with our ratio being point eight, point eight point two in that ballpark, we're going to stand to lose even more revenue. That's a tremendous loss for our county from a budgetary standpoint. From the real estate side of things, from our real estate agents and insurance brokers in the room, we all know property values are going to continue to go up. There's no denying that. Whether we want to agree with it, like it, whatever, it's going to happen. Nobody would have thought pay would get as high as what they are looking at in now. Things are going to continue to go up. By going from a twenty-eight year to a twenty-seven year, we're taking away that one-year growth. We're going to see an increase. Our ratio before the twenty-twenty-two, or twenty-twenty-three reappraisal in twenty-twenty-two was point eight point. That was our ratio. We all know we're twenty-three now, starts the reappraisal, how much all of our values went up. One year out from the reappraisal, twenty-four year, our ratio is point eight. So we've already experienced more growth in one year since twenty-twenty-three than we did from eighteen to twenty-three. That's where our market is headed. If you want to sell, it's a great time to sell. If you want to buy, good luck. It's tough. But our sales are through the roof. The volume has slowed down, but the values have not gone down. From a farmer's standpoint, Mr. Russell, six percent per year is the most that the greenback property can go up. We're on a five-year cycle. That's thirty percent right off the bat. You're going up thirty percent. Four-year cycle, you're going up twenty-four percent. So it's better for the farmers, it's better for the landowners. I, I wouldn't listen to everything that you said. I was trying to get the computer. Our disabled veterans, our low-income elderly who are receiving tax relief, right now, they're being penalized. That ratio is applied to them in what they receive. Right now, the disabled veterans get seven hundred and ninety-two dollars applied to their property taxes. Once this ratio hits, they're going to get six hundred and thirty-three dollars. The elderly, low-income people who apply for state tax relief right now get a hundred and forty-four dollars. After this ratio, it's down to a hundred and fifty dollars. So it's hurting the people who need the help the most. We've got a little over five, roughly five hundred and fifty people in the county who can take advantage of the, either tax relief or a disabled veteran. I think it's a win-win for our county. Things are going to continue to go up. I'd rather it go up a little bit as opposed to a whole lot. Biometrically, Commissioner Meere, I think it's more about the budget. It just makes sense. And I think Mr. Muntowers said we're the third county to do it. I think the five counties called me today. They're looking at it. Harman County's looking at it. McNary County's looking at it. Chester County's looking at it. Benton just hit it. They've just come out of the reappraisal. They went from five to a four. This is the new trend that we're going to, with an order of this. I need your blessing and your approval for this. We did not do this in twenty-twenty-three because it wasn't our option in twenty-twenty-three. The law just passed July twenty, July first of twenty-twenty-four, when we were allowed to do this. Once we found out we were allowed to do it, C-Task reached out to me and other counties, and we've been getting the ball rolling. It's taken a while to get to this point, but I need your blessing in order to be able to do this. And I would be glad to answer any questions that you have, as well as Mr. Joe, he's, he's here.
Yeah, question. I was just kind of curious to get out right there. In this area, like you said, you mentioned three counties this week that are changing. Again, what in this area, what counties, what are current counties on versus what we're fixing on? I mean, it's a good deal. For the county, I'm just, I'm just kind of curious. What are these other neighboring counties like McNary, Chester, Madison?
McNary is on a five-year. I don't know if they're going to look at a four-year or not right now. They have some staffing issues. We have a checklist at C-Task that we create to find the candidates to do this. There's a lot of things have to be in place. You have to have support from the county and the municipalities. You have to have the budget. You have to have a good staff, to be able to do the work. There are some that are just not ready for that yet. The ones that he was talking about are all in East Tennessee. Sullivan County is home county. He's looking at a two-year that they're going to do Thursday. Uh Sullivan County is home county is looking at a two year that they're going to do Thursday. Blount County last month passed a three year. Knox County is on their commission docket next week to do a two year. It's starting to, we're at the tipping point of this.
Yes.
Barnes County and Smith County were the first two to do it. They they did it in the in the midstream last year. So they went, one went from a six to a four, the other went from a five to a four. And then we've got the Davidsens and the Shelby's that are reappraising now, and I look for them to do something shorter. Or even we're even talking about some things with indexing, which would be another law that they're looking at proposing. With the way the market is, we're not doing doing this just because the market's high. If the market drops, the more frequent you reappraise, you can capture that too.
Yeah.
I was involved in a reappraisal in Wilson County in two thousand and eleven. We reappraised, you know, before that in two thousand and five. And then in two thousand and six, the market leveled and then it dropped. But because five and six, when we reappraised, it had grown some. When we did the eleven reappraisal, everybody in the county still saw some type of value increase. And it was hard for them to understand and hard for me to explain because the news is telling them they lost twenty five percent of their value. And they did, but it had gone up before it came back down. And that is that is the hardest argument to tell somebody. And it really hurts the budget too. So you want the reappraisal to follow the market.
Harden County, uh Ms. Mary, the assessor there, you talked to her. She's looking at doing exactly what we're doing. They're on the same side with us right now. They reappraised with us in twenty twenty three. So she's wanting to go to a four year. Her mayor is wanting her to go to a four year. If y'all have been to some of your county commissioner conferences or the mayor's conferences, you've heard the comptroller and his staff preaching about this more frequent reappraisal. So a lot of the local government municipalities, county mayors, they are asking questions now because they're seeing the loss of revenue. Uh Middleton, Middleton is very unique in this. Middleton has around eighteen million or so in what we call Office of State Assesses Properties, OSAP. Their total assessment for the city of Middleton of the real impression was roughly forty million. Their budget, uh property taxes around four hundred thousand. When this ratio hits this year, they're going to lose about sixty grand. That's a lot of money for a small municipality to lose. So this is going to be their attention, a lot, a lot of attention. But the other counties are looking to do it and uh they're looking to us to kind of lead the way.
Okay.
Josh, what what will our additional cost be? I'm assuming it's more labor if you're having to assess more often. Is it part of our, am I, is that awful?
No, you're you're, well, yes.
I am wrong or I'm right?
I'm sure there will be more labor that goes into it on our end because the state can't do everything. We're going to have to do some key here that we're already used to doing. The visual cycle is not going to change. There's not going to be any additional cost. Right now, I've actually cut back. I've got two part time. Before, I had one full time and one part time. The only thing that could change is me going back to that full time and keeping the part time that I had before. Right now, I'm two part time. Uh, once checking the permits, we got roughly a hundred permits right now throughout the county. So we're keeping track of those. The other one is doing the visual cycle. So it would be nice to have the full time. It ain't like we ain't doing it. It's hard to find somebody who's got it up here uh to do everything that we need to do. What we do is not, it's 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 very complicated, complex.
And also you're just saying there really won't be any additional cost to the county?
Just moving it from the cycle here is just a different year. Because you'd be doing it the next year anyway. And like we said, it better captures uh the values.
And and some of you remember in two thousand and seven, we went through reappraisal. And at that time, we were on a six year cycle. Well, after the reappraisal in two thousand and seven, we were pretty much at the height of our real estate market at that time. We were in it. I was in Jacksonville, making my hand over the fist. We're doing well in real estate. The bottom fell out. The folks of this county were assessed at those high values all the way until two thousand and thirteen. So they had to ride out all the way through that valley, two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten. By the time we reappraised in two thousand and thirteen, we had a small, small, small increase. So the same thing you were talking about. Uh, this captures the value whether it's higher or lower, the more frequent you do it, the the better off we are to capture that.
You knew the action on that because I believe the state board of equalization.
The board of equalization has to approve our plan. Joe, C-Pas, the help is right there. They have to approve it. In order for me to send it to them for their approval, I have to get it approved by the body because we're changing our plan from a five year to a four year. Yeah, under resolution. That's what they had going from a five to a four.
I do have two questions, Nick. So the first one, you might have already answered, but um does this impair our constituents at all? You kind of touched on it because you said it's a little too much. You don't have to lose a lot of money, but uh will they have to pay more? I think it's what I'm asking.
I don't I don't think there will be any increase on it because you're going to have a certified tax rate just like you would in a normal regular reappraisal. So it's it's not going to be a windfall. It's just hitting the values of market.
And then the second one, um what does this look like in two years, five years? Because so often I feel like up here we make a decision and then two years later or a year later, somebody else comes and tells us something opposite of what we've been told or that something has changed or et cetera, et cetera. So two years, five years, ten years, um you're saying that we should that it should be closer together?
Yes, I'll answer that for Josh. It's not not in his place. It's not, he doesn't understand. He he does. But C-TAS and the Division of Property Assesses, which is with the comptroller, we've been studying this for many years. I I tried to do this in Shelby back in twenty twenty and that started this process. And as we see, if the values are not coming down, they're they're going up or even if they did, we've got a bunch of law firms and tax reps that come in and tax, well, that's law firm. They come in and appeal your commercial properties. And if they appeal, they can get to a value on a ratio here and they can also have that ratio applied with them to get an extra discount on their property. So the more we can take away from the ratio, the more value and more revenue we can save for the county. And eventually, uh Mr. Bumpfowery, I said he wants to get his county to a two year because his ultimate goal is for annual reappraisal, where you're always at market value. We completely wipe the sales ratio off the board. And if somebody appeals, we're just talking about that. They can bring in their income streams or we can bring in their costs and we can talk about that and not have to worry about this ratio thing that the law gives them. If it's an extra cut, it just is arbitrary to me.
So is that the number that the state would like to see? Is that what you?
Well, there's different theories on it. The the comptroller is looking all the way down to annual. The PDA, myself, and the TNA, your representatives, Wilton, I mean, and most of the assessors are looking at maybe doing a four year and eventually just keeping it on a four year, but allowing indexing in between where you can index it up to one and it wouldn't be a full reappraisal and there wouldn't be any more cost. You can get a certified rate every year if you could have.
Beth is a a question. So Beth is my classmate. The last reappraisal in twenty twenty three, our values went up so much. The certified rate that was given to this body from the comptroller's office, that was to generate the same amount of revenue as the year before. Our rate went from two fifty five to a dollar eighty one, one point eight one oh two. That's what it's still at right now. Some people, myself included, own our residential properties. We did pay them. I am paying them. The residential folks bore the brunt of that reappraisal. The next one, I feel like is going to be the same one. Some of your commercial properties, some of the farmers, the landowners, because by law, the landowners are capped now to bid twenty four percent. If our market value goes up more than that, they're going to pay a little bit more. But nothing like what homeowners are. Homeowners are going to bear the brunt of it. In years past, it would always the landowners bore the brunt of it because there was modest gains in the homes, five, ten, fifteen percent. So the landowner bore the brunt of it. That's not the case anymore. We're going to see, I'm going to pay, homeowners are going to pay more. But I would rather it be a little bit as opposed to a lot. All of us can make adjustments. It's hard to make five, six, seven hundred dollars adjustment. If you can go up in little increments, that's that's the way to go instead of hitting everybody all at once. So taking away the years worth of that gross growth, as hard as that's going to be, it's going to be easier taking away that one year as opposed to waiting for that 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 is going to be harder, but it could be a lot worse.
In the long run, it's better. In the long run, over time, it's better.
Yes.
Not not right now, but later, later.
Plus, with the revenue that we're losing on this on this county or any municipality loses revenue, the bills still have to be paid. So what we're doing, a few people are getting the benefit, but everybody in this room, everybody's mom and grandma and aunt, uncle sitting in the house, they're going to have to make up that shortfall. So you're taking a few that's benefited and spreading it out amongst everybody else. To me, that ain't right. So I I'd like a short. Yes, sir.
Good to see you again. Uh Joe Joss invited me over when Joe was here, another representative from C-TAS and the mayor, Ms. Linda. But when he says lose um from the budget side, like he said, building sixty thousand or ours is about three hundred. It's not really a loss in dollars. That's that's sixty thousand, the other three hundred thousand that we cannot budget on revenue side because of the ratio. And going forward, like as Joe said, right now, we have two ratio years between appraisals. This will take us down one. And and also on the land side, for me, it's a no brainer business wise, property owner or county government. Uh, it's better for for us on the county side in budget, whether you're capturing revenue that Josh is talking about, you're not able to capture or everything goes up must come down. When it does start down, you're better off having to decrease that revenue slowly than in a big jump. And then also on the property owner, as you said, um the homeowners bore the brunt of it. Of course, your your actual taxes didn't go up here once your appraisal did. But like we were on a five year cycle, if your taxes went up a hundred dollars, if we're on a four, they may only went up seventy or eighty. But same thing, if they start down, you'll capture your money back. So your taxes reduce by seventy eight dollars. You'll get it a year quarter. So it it for me, it was no brainer for for both sides, government and tax, but in property owner.
Thank you.
All right, any more questions?
Any other questions?
All right, forward.
Mayor, what I what I need is approval from that uh on that resolution they have to uh to pull.
So.
Send it through.
We have a motion and we have a practice. Any discussion on the motion? All right, so I don't believe we need to go on. I believe we need to, all those in favor to change the reappraisal cycle, please signify the same. All opposed, might sign. Thank you very much. And I'll still have that signed to you tomorrow.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, and we have to uh we need to pull this um this resolution to amend in chapter three. There was some uh words that we needed to uh change. I've talked to Richard, Richard may not. Richard's not going to be at this time. We need to pull pull that resolution and um and then Casey, you have some things you want to come on up and let me finish.
Oh, I'll forward you to the crowd. The commissioners, uh before you, I have, I think, four items. First one, I don't have the same page. First one on mine is the question. The question that we have, uh we're reducing our fund balance. We're reducing our fund balance to uh put money into our chemicals for the finish off the spring of the right way to the remainder of summer. It's thirty eight thousand, deadening from one thirty, one thirty nine thousand to chemicals, one thirty, one sixty two thousand, forces dead. Then now I'm thirty eight thousand. I can say this is just to finish up the right way that we're contracting out, trying to keep the right ways straight for the summer. We have enough for the spring. If this would carry some later for summer. But uh I'm going to approve before this. If anyone has any questions.
Did that make it to us?
It's supposed to be a question and then happy. That's why I said I'm here. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So I said I don't have a sign on me and.
Casey, this gentleman, Paul, or just?
This is coming out of my front row, going into our chemical business, one dollar a dollar.
So this is a finish up contract?
Yes, this is a finish up contract, like uh it's about fifty thousand dollars of every time these sprays, which is all spring and summer. So we've already done the fall, we're getting the spring. We should have enough of the spring and this is finishing out for the summer. But I think he's going to start spraying before we do that for two hours. So that's why we're trying to get it done now.
I make a motion, except this budget amendment.
Thank you.
Motion made. Second, discussion on the motion. Casey's already been on your board.
Yes, yes, I'm on board now. You can pray that you can.
All right, all those in favor, please signify the same. We need a, Matt and Perk, we need to move on on cases because that needs changing. Okay, go ahead. You're in, Matt and Perk. Let's go.
Dale?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
You there?
Yes.
Yallett?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Granton?
Yes.
Hasling?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Kattamore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Leveer?
Yes.
Miller? Sane?
Yes.
Diggers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes. All right, I don't know what you have in mind uh for the next one, but I've got a surplus of this that we're trying to get approved to de-mold this surplus. We're trying to have an auction in April, the twenty sixth, to pay the check for the Howard apartment. I contacted the school system, I think, tried to contact the city, anybody that's a municipality and they're not bringing the equipment. Trying to make a comfortable share of farm and property that we have. Anybody, uh, plans to, anybody, any office of equipment down there, so they need to be still taking. I'm trying to give them a plenty of time to just start circulating, but they won't. But this is the list of higher surplus stuff that we have on the yard that is either no armor service or just we don't use it in there. April the twenty sixth, last Saturday in April. Anybody's going to come, they don't need time to, to be able to talk.
I haven't done it.
We're having it. Yes, we're having it all.
All right, you need to approve your list. So. All right, most made to approve the service list. And a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify the same.
All right, the last two things I have is a poorly reported report. Anybody have any questions on either one of those special addresses? Put the same thing on the other one. For those, a motion for those to be approved. Make a motion to be approved.
Second. All right, most made, second, any discussion, please. All right, same, all those in favor, please signify the same.
Thank you, commissioners. That's all I have.
Thank you, Casey.
Yes, sir. The draft is running all over. Has been up for the last month. Maybe two months. We're on, we're on Michigan, but I've read it on there. We did, just interested to check the results.
We're on, we're on Mecklenburg right now. We did, just finished up the J. Rose. They're hitting down one side of Mecklenburg right now. We've done Crow Loop. We've done several. We've done Gildo, Aham, Mount Taker. We've done Crow Loop on Graves Creek and we're on Mecklenburg. We, uh, finished up, uh, J. Rose and Russell. But they're on Mecklenburg now, I can't get back.
Now, is the truck that we approved.
It's very, it's been spinning, spinning real quick, so I'm leaving really.
And again, Casey, if you had to speak a little about the science, about the speed and the sound.
The steering sound, which?
Yeah, they're all clear to you.
Yeah, we got, we got those inside.
Yeah, good. Thank you, man. Appreciate you, man.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, all right. And then next, we will, Commissioner Grant. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'd like to ask for the commission's approval tonight for, to the, uh, Harbin County Historical Commission. We have individuals coming forward that could be a great asset to the, uh, committee. Uh, her name is Deborah Carrier. She does many, many hours of volunteer work here in the county. Has done a lot of volunteer work for the Harbin County Library. Um, and since she has taken on learning about the Archives Building, we do not have anybody managing the Archives Building at this time. The, uh, two ladies that was working in the Archives Building, they have reached the age of upper eighties and nineties and they're not able to do it anymore. So we're gonna need someone, and Deborah has taken this upon herself. She'd be a great asset to the county. Uh, she does, like I said, a lot of volunteer work and, um, it comes from a positive recommendation from the, uh, commission, committee to appoint her to this board. So with that being said, I would like to have a motion to afford, appoint Deborah Carrier to the Harbin County Historical Committee.
I agree.
I agree. She's very good. Slow move.
Set.
All right, most may, second. Any discussion on Commissioner Grant? All those in favor, please say the final saying.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, thank you, commissioner. And next, uh, Commissioner, you wanna call over our special guest we have here with us, our court.
Chair, yes, sir, just a, just a brief, um, update on there. Uh, Shelby was here, I believe. I didn't attend the last meeting. I apologize for this and that. Shelby was here and gave us a, uh, update of some items with you that worked. But, uh, the airport project of the new aprons and the new terminal is, uh, moving on time. It's, uh, on budget. But tonight, we have, um, chairperson, Kathy Leder here, of the Airport Committee. And just to summarize what she is here tonight, we, we're looking at, and need the, uh, commission's permission to look at changing some design points of the facade of the new terminal. Um, this terminal plan was adopted from Fayette County. A two H is the engineering company. And, you know, it, we need to be set apart, in my opinion, for, for Fayette County. I mean, if you're flying over and you're looking at it, you could have the identical, uh, terminal as Fayette County. You don't know if you're landing in Fayette or if you're landing at Harbin County, you're just looking at the building. But seriously, we have a plan that L R K has teamed up with A two H. And it may, I'm gonna let Kathy address this, pardon, about the monies. Uh, she can do that much better than I can, but please, Kathy, take that or chairment of the Airport Committee up and, uh, fill us in a little more.
I had to get up here before you stole my.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for having me tonight. I'm Kathy Leder, chair of the Airport Committee. And, um, I know I want to be very brief because I know y'all have a lot to cover and want to be very respectful of your time. But I think, um, I would, I would like to present tonight, and I'd give everyone a handout, is what could literally be a generational um, opportunity for Harbin County, because we're only gonna have one shot at this. Um, as, as Brad said, we were updated last month, uh, by Shelby about the things that's going on now, which should be finished, he's hoping probably in the first of June, something like that. And then the next project would be the airport terminal. Um, we have plans that have been paid for, or just paid for, which are, as, as Brad said, it is a duplicate. It is the same terminal building plan as Fayette County's. And, um, while the, there's absolutely nothing wrong with that plan, it's just the same as Fayette County's. And the inside is, is great, but we have an opportunity, the, uh, to, to redesign the exterior facade just to, so while the interior is existing, I'm gonna read this, it's all sartrean and I don't know all over the place, so I'm gonna make this quick. While the interior, the existing plan is good, the exterior facade is a duplicate of Fayette County's and doesn't represent Harbin County's potential to be uniquely Harbin. An opportunity exists to redesign the exterior facade and create a building profile that would garner regional attention and bring renewed aviation and economic interest to Harbin County. The architects involved have expressed their willingness and desire to make the changes necessary to the plan to create a terminal building that would highlight aviation past, present, and future, and become an economic stimulus for Harbin County. The proposed design is unanimously approved by the Airport Committee. Additionally, the proposed plan is consistent with the airport's master plan outlined in the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three economic initiatives for Harbin County presented to the Tennessee Governor. While I'm not here to make an ask, um, because I feel like this is so important that there are many people around the corner, around the county, that would appreciate what this could do for Harbin, that would be willing to help contribute. And I also know, um, that right now, the county is not flush and doesn't want to commit a lot, so I understand that. Um, I would hope that maybe this plan is special enough and you see its potential, that you might want to contribute to this making these changes, maybe at a future date. But, um, I just, I would love it, and, and I, I have the same drawing, so if anyone has any questions about it, I would be happy to answer.
Commissioners, let me share this with you also. All those surrounding airports are full. The hangars are full. We have people approaching us every day wanting storage place for their planes. I don't know what's going on, but they are wanting to come to Harbin County. Uh, we have great fuel. The prices are wonderful. A lot of people fly their own airports where they have their planes hangar to come and bother and build the planes up. We, we do make money on fuel, but we could do a lot better adopting this master plan. And it is a master plan. It's, it's, it's a plan from A to Z. It's not one that we're just building on as we go. It's been worked on for thirteen dozen hours, hundreds of hours. And with this master plan, this airport could really set Harbin County and put us in the spotlight.
And just to, to clarify, what, what I'm proposing is the, the change of the exterior. The master plan has been approved, I mean, um, I think previously, the master plan was approved. It's just changing the exterior so that we provide something that's uniquely Harbin.
What's one of these proposals or your recommendations?
Um.
Going from the black and white to the color.
And, and just so you know, that's not black and white.
But you have one that says master plan effective, then you.
Oh, well, that was the master plan that was done, that kind of set the tone for the, the look of the new terminal.
So you're, you're talking about the overlay.
So the overlay is just the changes that will be made to make what we have today look like what we're proposing.
So that's what you're asking is overlaying.
Yes, I'm asking to, to go from existing to proposed.
Basically, to sum it up, what we're asking for tonight is the commission's approval to move forward, changing the facade only of the black and white photo you have to the facade of the colored photo you have. Changing nothing about the interior of the building, changing nothing about the size of the building, it's just changing the front of the building only. That's the only thing we're asking for tonight.
I just feel like before I go out and start talking to people and trying to raise funds, I would love to get the emissions.
Yeah, because, because the commission approved.
Yes.
The previous plan, the old plan.
Yes.
And you're asking for just a modification to this plan of facade change.
The original plan was paid for by a grant.
Yes.
The grant itself from the state would not pay for any modifications. But those previous plans were not approved by the Airport Committee. Is that correct? It was just done, so that, that's where that went. This is not, this is not saying that, um, this is not money that's coming out of the, uh, county. This is not the county funds.
Brad, is this not just saying that you're gonna change it from the flat roof to a pitch roof, basically all the same? According to your drawing, that wasn't saying.
That is the opposite.
The slope proof to, to a less vertical side.
Right, well, you know, those details haven't been hashed out by the engineers yet. It's just the front facade and, you know, the roof. I don't think we have any final roof plan yet.
But, well, what, if you look at the overlay, the slope on the, the sides, the actual structure hasn't changed. The parapet walls in front of that will cover the slopes. So you won't see the slopes. The only slope changes that is done is the top roof, and they are gonna lower that, that slope a little just to keep the ratio correct for the look of the building.
The, the slope roofing system, was that an architectural standing seam metal roof?
We haven't gotten to that point as far as the materials. I, I, I would think it's a standing seam.
With the slope group system.
Yeah, I, I understand your question. And I, I would support and recommend a standing seam roof on, on that.
Well, I don't think they'll be able to do that with, with the low slope roofing system.
Well, what, what I think the engineers, and I'm speaking for the engineers here, what I think the engineers are gonna do is raise the actual front walls to where we can hide the slope, if that makes sense.
Yeah, but that would be, again, probably not going with the metal roof. Probably, that, that's the design.
I mean, brain, it's, it's probably better.
A single ply roof and, uh, single pries to be okay, but they can also be not okay.
Well, the engineers, like I said, are working together and I would hope that they would address that type.
Well, I've worked with some of those that you've mentioned. I hope, uh, that that would be a question.
Fortunately, we have two engineering groups, not set up one, so we have four heads on the, on the, uh, putting this together, so hopefully.
So were they wanting to just move forward with the design and come up with a, a revised budget, is that what you're saying?
What, what we want to do is, um, to come up with a shovel-ready plan that we like. Because if we do, could get a terminal brand, we need to be ready to go day one. And so we want to get this, get the facade redesigned and ready for, for building.
Well, I guess my question is, is, uh, we approved a, a, a budget way, what, like, a year ago or close to a year ago? Uh, but it was a ninety or a ninety-five, five?
That was on page one that we discussed, approved the budget. It was a ninety-seven, three. At, at one time, it was ninety-five, five, the budget. And, uh, I think the air, uh, state of Tennessee stepped in and contributed a little bit more to that, but I can't, I can't.
So is that, is that, would that be, that's the number?
That, that was page one, so.
But is that what this is?
No, no.
Page one is what's happening today.
Yep.
So, so as far as the, the funds to do this, where, where is that?
As far as I know, I talked to Shelby today and, and he confirmed that he thinks the state is still looking at ninety-five, five for Harbin because we are one of the last remaining airports in Tennessee that are still in a lean to, that the building, this, ours was built in nineteen sixty-seven.
Well, we're, we're in, basically, the state of Tennessee wants to see this happen.
Yes.
They want to see it happen. That's good for us because when they want to see something happen, they'll contribute more to our cause. And number two, we're in violation of where our, our terminal setting now, the state guidelines and.
So are the state going for the revised drawings and all that stuff, or where does that?
That, that's a discussion, um, without the approval of this, um, to go ahead and talk about changing. See, right now, this commission has approved the old drawings, so we can't even go ahead and even talk about this new rendering until the commission says we can. But as far as money goes, we'll, we'll bring back to you any, any monetary discussions that we need to have.
Right.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm confused.
Well, the, the changes that are being made are going to change the building substantially. I don't, um, I mean, it's still gonna be brick building. But.
Rather than your executive gift, you participate in changes, we kind of buy it and it's just.
That's what the engineers, engineers are saying, uh, L R K and, uh, A two H, they're like saying, again, they're working together on this to keep the cost down as much, but they, they won't go all the way in knowing that we haven't presented this to the commission. So until we jump this hurdle, we're dead in the water, basically.
Would you like to possibly move?
Absolutely. Or I, I would not be standing behind this. It would not have my approval on the committee, Airport Committee, and it has the full Airport Committee's approval to go forward with this.
Cory's on our committee also, so he's.
So we just need a motion to, and like I say, Kathy or myself or Cory will bring back any monetary changes that it could be a liability to the county. So we're, we're, you know, we're not gonna blindside you with something at all.
So permission to bring, right now, you're not asking for approval. You're just asking.
We're just asking for permission to move to change the, the design, pretty much.
But.
Make a motion.
But we are, we are changing the design without knowing how much the building's gonna cost. Now, I'm looking at, at the picture on the front and I can't tell what it, what it is. I mean, I see the stone at the bottom. What is the upper portion of it? It is brick, brick and stone.
And that point will continue to be on the new facade also, the same materials.
Uh, you know, I mean, just looking at it, I mean, if you look at page one and page two, it looks like a lot of difference in those buildings. And I, I was up here when we built the C J C, and I don't want to get into that again. Because I've had to hear about it ever since then. And I don't want to get into, uh, you know, building a big extravagant airport terminal when we could have built something relatively simple. I'm not saying that's what's going on, but I'm saying I want to avoid that.
Well, Commissioner, again, I'll, I'll reaffirm you and, uh, tell you this, that if we go forward with this and have the commission's, uh, approval, that if, if we see that we're heading down that road, which you're talking about, we will, we will have it on the agenda and we will discuss it fully before any money is, is, uh, spent.
We can always deny the money.
Absolutely.
We got to give the commissions a look into.
Absolutely.
I am, I'm, I'm, I'm not asking you to make the change or anything. And, and Jackie, just to your point, that rendering, this is a much bigger building on this rendering. But the proposed plan is to, to give the same feel, the same look, but this is exactly the same footprint as the approved building. So it's the same size as this.
Motion on the floor. Okay, could you restate your comment, please?
I make a motion for the Airport Committee to proceed, possibly to make the changes.
Okay. And there is a second. Motion being made in second. Any discussion on the motion?
But again, we're not speaking about adding any funds. We can deny the money to come back and have the funds. We can give the permission to progress with it.
Is that?
I'm certain. All right, since this is no money at this time, we need to, uh, you don't have to take the roll call. All those in favor, proceed. Please say the final saying.
Aye.
All opposed, and like say. We have one. All right. And we thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
This time. All right. Commissioner and Mayor, could you please? Commissioner and Mayor, would you please move into our budgets, Mr. Sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Budget Committee met prior to this meeting. Um, Mayor Cole's updated his, us from his trip to Nashville about some, uh, possible funding due to our county down the road. Uh, Ms. Linda, what I was concerned with, the budget. And other than that, uh, the budget amendments you have in front of you, you can, you can skip through one through twelve. They were approved by the Budget Committee, so these go to full commission. So we will start at number thirteen. And we'll try to take questions over the go along. Okay, if everybody's ready, number thirteen is the workhouse. Uh, it's debiting a reserve account, fifteen thousand, three hundred. Credit to repair maintenance, fifteen thousand, three hundred. And that's with repair, repair, a water pressure valve at the workhouse that is restricted fund. They will be used for that.
Oh, question. I, the reserve account, you got plenty of money in it right now? Now, we've, we've been dipping off into those reserve accounts here lately.
Yes.
I mean, we're fine there, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And, uh, next month or our next meeting, she's actually gonna have us a running balance of all our reserve accounts.
Right.
And, and I don't remember that specifically, Commissioner Gillum, but all the reserves combined right now, I believe, totaled around eight hundred thousand.
Okay.
I, I don't remember the balance of that said one, but there's one there.
That's not.
About one sixty or about. And that's one specific, specified things that money can be used for is repairs on the workouts.
Right.
Okay, uh, number fourteen, Circuit Court, debiting, uh, clerical personnel, nine thousand, six eighty. State retirement, three thousand, four twenty. Uh, reserve account, one thousand, six hundred. Credit to deputies, twelve thousand, seven hundred. Unemployment, four hundred and office equipment, one thousand, six hundred. Uh, that's kind of two combined. The sixteen hundred from the reserve account is going to office equipment. Uh, that's kind of like the last one.
Yeah.
Uh, money can be spent for. The other part of that one, uh, that's in Ms. Unice's office. She had a deputy, deputy that was classified as, as clerical that needed to be under the deputy line item. That's the reason for the transfer in the funds. And that's a debit and credit balance of fourteen thousand, seven. Any other questions on that? Okay, fifteen, County Clerk's Office, uh, debiting reserve account, fifteen thousand, crediting office equipment, fifteen thousand. Uh, reason justification, money for reserve account to replace outdated and broken equipment, uh, that's Ms. Toadette's office. Same thing, reserve account replacing equipment. And that is allowed to be done out of that said reserve account. Uh, number sixteen, Harding County Sheriff's Office, debiting, uh, deputy pay line, one thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and twenty cents. Crediting secretary pay line, one thousand, five oh seven, twenty. And that is basically an increase of the Mr. Sheriff Baker's rate of pay. She's been assuming extra duties, uh, permanent employee that's been out for a while in that office and also she is getting her C C F O certification.
So her salary is up for that, they say that?
Yeah, that was asked by the Budget Committee. That, that is a regular.
So that we'll see that monthly or?
That is for the end of this year.
That's what I'm thinking.
But what I do want to point out is that will be, although it's a line item transfer of this year, it won't be next year. It'll be part of an increase in the salary.
Going into fiscal year.
Yeah.
Which if it were to take place in March first, it would be looking at about six thousand for a total of, you know, increase.
Counting here.
Yeah, that's why I was asking. We haven't seen it. That's not, that's just for one month?
That's for the remainder of the fiscal year, twenty-four.
Can we do this one separate?
Sure. Okay, we've been asked to pull out sixteen as far as voting goes, so pull that one out. I did speak with the sheriff, uh, prior to this meeting and, um, asked him about this one. He was just pretty adamant that of, of all the work she's took on plus with her certification, he wanted to do it in there, uh, for the full commission.
You need a vote?
Uh, we'll, we'll do that last. We're just gonna pull it out when I'm gonna take. We'll vote that stuff. Okay, moving to number seventeen, uh, Mayor's Office, debiting education incentive, six seventy. Crediting miscellaneous, five hundred and unemployment compensation, one seventy. For a debit credit balance of six seventy. That's basically line item transfers, some of these small ones, but, uh, depending on the line item, they do have to go before this full commission. Uh, number eighteen, County Trustees' Office, debiting Medicare, one hundred and part-time personnel, three sixty-five. Crediting unemployment, one hundred and travel, three sixty-five. Again, line item transfers. Uh, nineteen, Health Department, debiting fund balance, twenty-six thousand, eight oh two. Crediting, uh, supervisor, twenty-three, five, forty-four. Social Security, one thousand, four sixty. Health insurance, one thousand, four hundred, unemployment, fifty-six and Medicare, three forty-two. For a debit credit balance of twenty-six thousand, eight oh two. Uh, reason over to the right, that is a new position funded by state grant. Uh, this budget amendment is for remainder of this fiscal year and it is a, a three-year grant.
So this thing is gonna pay that grant for three years?
The way it looks like, yeah.
And this is our portion?
No, this is just the money passed through. That's for the remainder of this year. And I did ask the question, why the state retirement, the C R O, uh, the person wouldn't be eligible till next fiscal year or retired?
Of course he's.
The court does. That'd be what, six months?
Yes.
And this position has been filled, is that, that's what she said? Any other questions on nineteen? Okay, number twenty, Other Public Safety, debiting state retirement, nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and seven cents. Crediting, uh, deputies, four thousand, nine, forty-three, oh nine, Social Security, three oh five, seventy-six. And Medicare, seventy, seventy and other charges, four thousand, five, ten, fifty-two. For a debit credit balance of nine thousand, eight, thirty, oh seven. Uh, the explanation on this one, this is the last individual that took the fifty percent payout on the lawsuit. We already did an amendment for all the rest of them, this is the last one. Uh, twenty-one, the reappraisal program, reverse your debit and credit on this, that's a correction. Should be debiting part-time, seven thousand, six hundred and crediting, uh, deputies, seven thousand, six hundred. That's Josh's office and as he said, he's got one full-time, two part-time. That was an error to Ms. Linda's, but. Uh, twenty-two, the Animals Department, debiting opioid reserve account, ninety-one thousand, crediting the other capital, uh, other equipment outlay, ninety-one thousand. And that's to purchase, uh, needed respiratory equipment, cardiac monitor to respond to, uh, drug overdoses. That is a reserve account. Uh, number twenty-three, Juvenile Court, debiting, uh, contracts for government agencies, five thousand, travel, six oh nine and fund balance, fourteen thousand. Crediting other salaries and wages, sixteen thousand, four fifty. Uh, employee social security, one thousand, twenty, state retirement, nineteen hundred and Medicare, two thirty-nine. For a debit credit balance of nineteen thousand, six oh nine. Uh, this is Dick Jones's office, Juvenile Court. And, um, when Ms. Linda budgeted this from prior times, it was based on a thirty-five hour week. But with everything going on, his workload has went up and he's actually working forty a week and averages about five hours of overtime. And some, some of that is what our judge sent him out to do. He's on call at different times, the information we were told, but. Any other questions on twenty-three? Uh, twenty-four, Harding County Sheriff's Office, debiting guard pay, five thousand, crediting overtime, five thousand. That's just line item short falls from when sheriffs been shorted down and paid overtime curbships. Twenty-five, Harding County Sheriff's Office, debiting training, three thousand, crediting travel, three thousand. Uh, that's line item transfer, boot fund for training line, travel line for required travel for required training. Twenty-six, Sheriff's Department, debiting opioid settlement fund, five hundred dollars, crediting law enforcement equipment, five hundred. And that's to purchase dental strips for sheriff's department, using opioid fund, funds for drug overdoses.
Okay, so.
They should've been at your podium the last three.
And I'm a caller.
So the numbers don't match, you see. So our twenty-four was this.
Yeah, okay.
So the numbers are.
Make twenty-four, twenty-seven. Make twenty-five. Make twenty-five, twenty-four. That's five thousand. We charged that out. Make twenty-six, twenty-five.
So this is twenty-six. We only have. Where's the twenty-six?
That's twenty-four.
This is twenty-five.
Y'all will have the, you fail to make the ticket, okay?
Which one?
Mine, twenty-six.
That's what I said.
That's the five hundred dollar.
No, we don't have.
This, this is the packet we don't go back from Mayor's office. So twenty-six, you do not have, but that's the one that is the five hundred dollar debit and credit from, um, an opioid settlement fund to law enforcement, in the amount of five hundred dollars. That should be number twenty-six, it's failed.
Yes, this twenty-six.
So twenty, twenty-four, you told us that this was for.
Were that four?
No, twenty-four, five thousand dollars.
Oh, you got.
That's twenty-four.
Correct.
So that's for overtime.
Correct. Twenty-five, that's for three thousand.
You said twenty-seven was four thousand for, um, training.
Yeah, I got one too.
This one I have purchased so far.
Yes, that's the, that's twenty-five.
Yes, I have twenty-five. So what, who was this for travel?
Sheriff's Office. For me, here to stand. He's had a lot of deputies.
Well, this one has the drug investigator.
Correct. That's specifically for the drug investigator. This one is for deputies. He's had a lot of deputies. They go, they go to train and they quit, get a new one, gotta go to train. That was a discussion.
Maybe for clarification.
Okay, we got twenty-five. Everybody understand that they don't have twenty-six, that's the five hundred dollars.
Oh.
And that last one, um, number twenty-seven, it was number twenty-four, it's your podium, is Sheriff's Office in, debiting training, one thousand, crediting travel, one thousand. And that is for, uh, specifically for the drug investigator. So any other questions on thirteen through fifteen? And seventeen through twenty-seven? That is with number sixteen pulled out. If not, Mayor, I think most approve budget amendments thirteen through fifteen and seventeen through twenty-seven.
Second.
That's been.
Motion being second. Any question on the motion of the amendments? All right, say, remember, we'll have a roll call, but please, read it by the card.
Right?
Yes.
Queen?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Camore?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Granton?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Gannon?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
Fail?
Yes.
Okay, and now back to, uh, budget amendment number sixteen. For discussion, approval or otherwise.
Let me just, let me just clarify my thoughts on that. We talked about it at the Budget Committee, but we have tried to put individual salary increases only at budget time, not in the middle of the year. I mean, this is, uh, fifteen hundred and seven dollars, but that's not the actual, uh, raise that you would be getting, right, Commissioner Lanier?
Yes, that's just for the end of this.
Just for the end of this.
So that's for March to June.
Yeah, so.
Whatever's basic.
And, uh, the designation that she's getting, the certification, she also gets a stipend from the state.
Yes, she do.
This was.
A thousand dollars once she's completed the auction.
But my thinking was that the sheriff just needs to put this raise if he wishes to give. There's nothing against Ms. Baker. But if he wishes to give her a raise, he needs to put it in the budget request for the new budget year.
Yeah.
So we move to table item, uh, amendment sixteen.
Maybe until that's clarified, I would say until the sheriff, if you're next, next one.
I'd say move to table budget number sixteen this time.
Say. Okay, what should we make? Second, any discussion on that? All right. So, on those, if I would be sitting by the same.
My, one last, uh, sir. Uh, last month, uh, Commissioner Kenmore brought from the Solid Waste Committee about bringing the, convenience center workers to twelve dollars an hour, thought it was in Stevens' budget. Ms. Linda met with him and if you didn't know, the hours were cut. Uh, federal law now cannot work part-timers thirty hours a week on a constant basis or you have to provide health insurance. So most of the centers have cut the hours to twenty-five, is that right? Yeah, most of them, twenty-five hours per week. But Ms. Linda did meet with Stephen and went through his budget. Um, and, and if the money is there to bring them to ten fifty, uh, with this commission's approval, just the convenience center workers. And, and that budget is, although it is within the landfill's budget, it's two separate parts. The convenience centers and then this landfill and its location.
Where are they?
Uh, eighty, eighty-one to nine oh eight, is that what she said? That's what she said.
Eighty-one to nine oh, nine oh one.
If the rest of the part timers in the county are included.
Yes.
But he doesn't have one.
He does.
But he only has to go with ten.
Correct. After the meeting last month, she sat down and they went through the budget. And, and just on the convenience center part of his budget, he had room to bring this to ten.
So.
So.
For the rest of this fiscal year.
So June. So in June lack, could he not get them as well?
Well, that would be, uh, new budget, we'll be working on that in the upcoming months. This, this was just on the heels of, of last.
Yes, yes.
Month of when the Commissioner Kenmore brought from the Solid Waste Committee, and she went to the table to see what we can do. And that's what we did.
So we need to.
That, that came, that came with the positive recommendation from the budget committee to full commission.
So we need to.
Yes.
So.
Permission of, uh, permission of Mr. Bickers was asked.
Right, since the reduction in island work in relation to the raise, does that equal out pretty well their overall payment?
That's a good question, we didn't ask Mr. Russell, but, um, then I didn't do the math. The reduction in hours is just because so you wouldn't have to provide health insurance.
I understand, but my, my thought is, if, uh, if you put well equal out, then you wouldn't be getting them the same ridiculous, you're getting them about the sheriff's department, about that employee.
Is it, that's my, that's my question.
So you think it put well equal, it won't come up the same honestly? I mean, the people in their budget.
Well, we're talking about part-time versus full-time, eight dollars and eighty-one cents an hour.
Well, I mean, that's simple, I agree, I'm just trying to figure out what's going on in the problem compared to that situation with the sheriff.
And, and we'll, to answer, uh, Commissioner Miller's question, we'll, we'll be looking at that come budget time. I mean, I, I think everybody here would like to see them at twelve, if it's possible. Uh, but there's revenue questions to be answered, since, uh, contractors aren't doing the work out there that we were having to have them do, you know, hopefully we'll be able to. There's still a lot of data to be kept before we get that far, we just, that was the information brought to us tonight, that at least we can go to ten fifty for those part-time meetings. Kenmore, we also made a decision last month when, which Kenmore brought it up, and I seconded, and we rescinded it, is because the Budget Committee thought in the best interest of the county not to start doing this in the middle of fiscal year. Well, that's true, that is a practice. Yeah, so. And you also find out if it was in the budget.
Yeah, that's why.
But, you know, I'm, or I, I fought for twelve, I was tired for the last two years, and, and I believe they should get that, but, are we gonna let the president now to change? And, and we've never clarified between the two, but big difference in full-time and part-time with the insurance, state retirement. Another type of thing where, where with part-time, there's no insurance, there's just subsidiary Medicare package, you know.
And you argue that this is a group, not as an entity.
Right, yeah, this is a group of people, not individuals. I'm just going by what you all said in the last. And I'm saying it hasn't been done, we have, uh, there has been things done, even in the middle of the year. Uh, even with the sheriff, but he came to me as Budget Committee Chair because he wanted it to be, I know, and if you remember, we made the chief deputy exempt from overtime, but he got a raise. Uh, he agreed to stay at eighteen deputies, but he used some of that money that was in his budget, because he was budgeted at twenty-two. And we gave deputies raises, and he said he would, that he would stay at eighteen. So it's, we just say that from the Budget Committee, I mean, yes, we, I do say that, I don't like to practice that, when I say you can't have it, it has to have. I absolutely.
Well, that was my question about the relation between the two, if it's staying in that particular amount of budget, that we had budget originally.
Right.
Would you all have an answer?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's based on budget on the, on the convenience center work, yes, that's why the amount is ten fifty, not twelve, because Ms. Linda did the math. We're, we're within the budget to pay up ten fifty now, the rest.
And the, the situation, sheriff was wanting to go back there and get, right? Was that line out?
Well, he was getting it from the deputy line, because there is some room there, but, but as Commissioner Wright said, and it's, it's apples and oranges, but one of them, when we did it, he became an exempt employee, or it was non-exempt. Uh, the other, with the deputies, it was kind of a group, such as this is, with this number sixteen, it is a, an individual. Now, yes, she is receiving some training at, at the state, and, and I'm sure we will compensate her eventually, uh, obviously with the training, that's the CCFO. Um, and, and then to the sheriff's point, you know, he said, he's had a person out for a long period of time, and she's took, uh, a lot of those duties upon herself.
All right, is there, uh, Commissioner Moore, did you move in favor?
It's on the table, I think, is what they did.
Okay, we have a first, is there a second to approve that?
Uh.
Okay.
I, I say.
We have a first and a second.
Approved.
Okay, yeah, the other number sixteen is already been taken. Yes, for the, for the, uh, convenience center losses.
Okay, we have a first and a second, that is to move them, the, um, the convenience centers to ten dollars and fifty cents. So it's first and a second, any discussion on that portion, please?
I would like to say that, you know, like Commissioner Bickers said, that we need to have that, um, workshop, what did you call it, seminar? A workshop, and we can discuss this more, and how we handle these things more in that workshop, so that we can all be on one accord, and we set a precedent for the directors and everybody, so that everybody knows what we expect, and it's not questionable, or we want to have this discussion.
All right, any more discussion? All right, say, remember, we need a roll call vote on that, Madam Kirk, please.
Dale?
Yes.
Buffer?
Yes.
DeBarry?
Yes.
Galen?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Granton?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kinnamore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Wings?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, as always.
Thank you, sir, thank you, Commissioner.
All right, next we move into, uh, um, our resolutions. If you would, if y'all see your packet, we have one for, this comes up every year about environmental risk property, this liquid tax property that has an environmental risk on it. And, um, this resolution says that we do not have to buy that back, uh, we did that in earlier, this is the old catalog, and associates, um, property go together, and, um, do you have that, Commissioner? Resolution for sale of, uh, the liquid tax property with environmental risk. All right, is there a motion to approve? Make a motion, second. Motion to be made in second, any discussion, please? Saying that, I believe we need a roll call of that, all those in favor, please signify the same. Aye. Motion to be made. Our, this moves with the real estate transfer tax. Um, this is one of the meetings at, uh, Hennepin National last few days, the Mayor's Association, Highway Association, different ones are getting behind this, uh, resolution. This resolution you have in front of you is just to say, we support that. What that is, is a fee, it's, it's under closing, uh, when you go and you buy a property, it's, it's like a transfer fee. And it's based on thirty-seven cents per hundred dollars of value, it's like a privilege fee, but the state gets that fee. So we're asking, uh, them to give us part of that back. So they do it based on the average, the third-year average, uh, for Hartman County, it's two hundred thousand dollars. So now they can't flunk it, but that's part of that fee that we come back, we're just saying this is in support of giving this back to our county. Um, the Mayor's Association is behind it, um, because the counties are saying it's another source of revenue for the counties, we need to get that back to the state. All together, with all the counties combined, it's going to be about a hundred and fifty-five million. I don't know if it will pass unless, um, well, with this session, because it's going to be what you call behind the budget. So, and some of the, I'm talking about on that. So this is a resolution just to say that we support getting that back, Casey is in on those as well, the Highway Association is in support of that, in that right case.
Yeah, TCSA, everybody, county commissioners, the Mayor's Association, the Highway Association, and all of them, everyone.
The Registers Association also.
Yes.
Right now, we get two point one percent is what comes back to the county. We retain two point four percent of everything we collect. And I tell you, Todd said, well, a couple of years ago, the Registers Association put this same deal forward, not fifty percent.
But. They made change to it in support.
Right.
Kind of each side.
I think having the support of the Mayor's Association and then Highway Department will help it get a little more traction this time. We hit a brick wall with that, the Registers, but we were just trying to get five percent back. But you realize this has a huge fiscal note, but it's just another, like Todd said, avenue for the county.
Could image for the.
Yes, and hopefully it will come back, I mean, and it's only, it's not mortgage tax, for those of you all that know, we collect transfer con- conveyance and mortgage taxes, only the conveyance tax, the real estate tax, so, which last year, fiscal year, we collected roughly four hundred thousand dollars, so, it would be wonderful, and, um, but yes, the Registers Association is in support of it as well, I spoke with Knox County Register earlier today, we talked about it, but I was making sure he read the bill about it's just the conveyance tax like I did, so. It's a good deal, hopefully we can get some of it back, I think we will get fifty percent, mm, I don't know, but if anything we get back helps, so. But it's more than we get now. Like I said, we get to get two point four percent, and that's really low compared to a lot of the, um, offices, like another clerk and masters gets, they get to retain like five to eight percent of things they collect, so this is really low for what we collect, so hopefully, um, we will get some traction on this time, on this, when Cage is the sponsor.
Yeah.
Walling, see if the Walling's the sponsor on the house side, so hopefully we'll get some.
Transfer? Jack Johnson was the sponsor.
On the, I mean, on the city side, I have just, yeah, I have just on the city side.
Yeah, there's several sponsors.
Yeah, there's several on the.
To come in board on that as well, so, this is just a resolution to support that. Move, be approved?
Yes, second.
All right, now, first and second, in the second. All those in favor, please signify the same. All right, we have a little here for the CPDT plan that we've applied for, for the, uh, new animals. Um, and if you'll see down here, uh, in the grand amount of four hundred and twenty, um, Southwest has to have this, and the, uh, grant administration has to have this resolution passed, so we may be accepting that when we, uh, apply for that, uh, animals. Is there more? Move to be approved?
Second.
First and second, any discussion on those votes? All right, Madam Kirk, we need a roll call of that, we need, all those in favor, signify the same. Aye. If you'd like sign. Next, we have, uh, as you know, in recent months, we had a passing of this working, Mayor Bowden, uh, I don't think he's here tonight, can't see, but, um, he said maybe here, but he's nominated Sergeant Desmond Williams for the Hill's point two for nine one one four. And we give him a motion to approve, please.
So most of the.
Second, approve and second, any discussion on that? Saying done, all those in favor, signify the same. Aye. All right, next we move to Mayor next item, the PTA and planning departments, they each were titled, uh, last month, so we have a motion to bring that on the table. No move?
Second.
We made a second. Mr. Kirk, that is none available, so we go ahead and have a, all those in favor, bring them off the table. Bye. Aye. All those opposed, now, Commissioner, yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion that we go ahead and appoint, uh, Ms. Uh, what's the name, uh, the two ladies, uh?
We go down, uh, that was coming up from the table, Grace Griffin?
Right.
And Ms. Pope.
Yeah, Ms. Griffin's in this call. I make a motion to go ahead and reappoint those.
For, for what?
Reappoint.
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 For, for which? Please, you're in second.
And, uh, we, what for applying, what for BZA, and, uh, so, when we discussed this?
For the, for the board appointments, the ones we just took off the, off the table.
Those two different positions, right?
The ticket, if you have to make.
No, that was the same board.
One is for the commission, one is for the BZI. Commissioner Bowsers motion to go ahead and reappoint those two positions. Mister Commissioner Jenkins, second, if you have any discussion on the motion.
What, which board we do it first, we just, we just do both boards like that?
We do both boards, both seven times, that was his motion.
Get this clarified.
Reappointing two positions. His motion.
Right, clarify, this is whole, one way.
We have, you want to do two? One person, I really don't need. We need to do one more at a time, since there are two separate boards, can you do one at a time? BZA and then do the.
Okay.
So, we both need to.
Recede.
I mean, not recede, but re- yeah, because we know two different. He's taken the second.
I make a motion that we appoint Mrs. Pope to the BZA board. Mrs. Pope to the planning commission board, and the BZA board, Mrs. Griffin. I got it one at a time.
Yeah, you got it.
I'm making it part of it, and I.
Your first one was for Ms. Pope, planning commission.
Ms. Pope for the planning.
So, so who will that put on the planning commission currently, if, 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 if this lady is appointed or reappointed, is it reappointed?
It's reappointed.
So who, who will that have, how many seats will that fill on the planning commission? And just refill her.
She's already sitting.
Yes, she's already.
To reappoint her.
Just to be reappointed, right, she's already there.
So, so the planning commission had no empty seats?
So you asked resumes for these, uh, seats, did we get, we didn't get any resumes from those, could, to be reconfirmed? You had resumes in the paper for planning BZA, or will you not get?
There, there was only one resume, uh, that came in, it was actually, we had one last time, there was another that came in. Commissioner Buffer's not talking about that, he's telling us to reappoint Ms. Pope to the planning commission, her position is already there.
I know that, but she still asked for it.
Oh, she turned in?
No, she didn't turn in.
I'm sorry, misunderstood, Commissioner, I'm sorry, apologize. All right, so we have a first, and we have a second, to reappoint Ms. Pope to the planning commission. All right, then a discussion. So, so again, all right, that means there's no, if, if she's reappointed, there's no empty seats at the planning commissions?
That's correct, that's correct. Those are on stacked terms.
Right, I understand, I, I, for some reason, I was thinking that someone had retired or left, and I may, and I may have my.
That's on a different board.
Right.
Yeah, this is only five minutes.
So. Right, we've got first and second, any discussion? Saying done, let's move in to the vote, all those, do we need a roll call, vote back there? All those in favor, reappoint. All those in favor of reappointing Ms. Pope to the Planning Commission, Mr. Mayor Glenn Pope to the Planning Commission, please signify the same.
Aye.
All opposed, by the like side. Okay, is that correct? I need a legal opinion, okay, so now we move into the BGA.
Make a motion that we appoint, reappoint Mrs. Griffith to the BGA.
Can we make more than one resignation at a time?
This one's a reappointment, anything else, don't be doing it.
Yeah, this is, this is a reappointment, he's talking about, is there a second for the reappointment motion? Second, second, for the reappointment, Mr. Dever, or Mr. Henderson?
So, so again, how, how many seats will be filled on the BGA? Two. So will there be two empty seats, or there'll be three empty seats?
All right.
After this, there'll be more than any one.
Yeah, the next one will be an empty, there was a vacancy because Mr. Henderson left, he had an unexpired term. So that unexpired term will end in November of twenty-six. So, but right now, we're doing a reappointment, there was a motion and a second for reappointment for Ms. Griffith, Ms. Deborah Griffith.
How long has she been on the committee?
I'm, Commissioner, I'm not sure, the, Commissioner Sane, do you know, you're the same commissioner?
Still a while. I mean, laws change and things change, so we think we need new people, new ideals, to look more stuff, I know she's been on sixteen, eighteen years, at least, and, and, uh...
Is she the only one that's been on the sixteen, I'm sure?
Yeah.
She's the, not that committee, no other committee, no person has been on them for that long.
Well, Todd may have come in before, he didn't like it, he was down saying committee forever.
Well, then, we have people up there who've been on for sixteen, nineteen years.
Is it like, well?
Uh, these are more like experience, in order to special, please. All right, we've got a first and second.
May I ask for a roll call, Butler?
Sure, is anyone? All right, leave it there, okay. All right, if you put it by the buzzer, you'll roll call, vote quick.
Wright?
No.
Wayne?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Kenmore?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Hasley?
Yes.
Granton?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Gavlin?
Yes.
Dever?
Yes.
Buffer?
Yes.
Mayo?
Yes.
Now, those are, those are the appointments, there is a vacancy that was, that was left open with the retirement of Mr. Henderson. So... I would like to make a motion that we, uh, nominate Mike Mitchell for that position. All right, I have two, second, I have two resumes here.
I'd like to swing a motion for D.B. Simpson to fill that vacancy.
Is there a second? Is your second saved? Okay, all right, now, okay, let me have your attention. We have two people that are in the running for this position, you can make a motion then to cease nominations, and go roll call two, would you like to do that?
I make a motion to cease nominations.
Second, is there a second? All right, second, and, and, all right, all those in favor, signify the same, aye, cease nominations. All right, since there are two people in the run, the way we did this with the judge, when we had two for the judge's position, we did a roll call vote. So, when they call your name, and let's be clear, we have Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Simpson, two very fine candidates, and we will take a roll call. When they call your name, you either say Mitchell or Simpson.
Question?
Yes, sir.
In order?
Yes, sir.
How many people do you have on the BGA that's on the Planning Commission?
All right, there's five on the BGA, and, uh...
All right, so my question is, how many people of, of the planning do you have on the BGA? Eddie Moore's on it, right?
Yes, sir.
How many more is there anymore?
Uh, Mr. Clark, Mr. Richard Clark.
Asking, who says on both? My question is that.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, and they elect the chair, remember, their own body elects the chair, so... Madam Clerk, if you move the idea, what we'll do now, let's be clear, everybody being clear? All right, when, when we call your name, you said we want for that appointment, I have two well-qualified candidates here, looking at their resumes, so I believe y'all have those as well, so it's good, Madam Clerk, proceed.
Mayo?
Mitchell.
Buffer? Dever?
Mitchell.
Gavlin?
Mitchell.
Gillum?
Simpson.
Granton?
Simpson.
Hasley?
Simpson.
Jenkins?
Simpson.
Kenmore?
Simpson.
Blake?
Simpson.
Lanier?
Simpson.
Miller?
Mitchell.
Sane?
Simpson.
Vickers?
Simpson.
Wayne?
Mitchell.
Wright?
Mitchell.
Ten four, ten six, six, and ten six, uh, Simpson, Mitchell. All right, next we'll move into our, uh, our last item, for the business lawsuit, uh, Mr. Carter, please, please.
My voice has been messed up for the last two days, so hope everybody can hear me. So, on, uh, Commissioner White, the raise, some of that, not those seven lawsuits that filed, those are all in this news, I've got all the words on that. And then the other is the Perry case, and we had, uh, the commission make a motion and accepted it, and Mr., uh, Sessions is trying to add some stuff to it, for example, saying that, um, that the money compensates the plaintiffs at a hundred percent, unpaid wages at a hundred percent, and that's not what we agreed to, to agree to, the mountain, and that he could determine, he wants it broken down, to quit, that's what we agreed to, and he also wanted to put some money, saying that the county is admitting liability, and, uh, and we're not doing that any settlement checks, it's gonna have a lot built for it, going to the trial to case. So, I filed a motion, and I sent you all copies of it, um, to enforce the settlement as we agreed, trying to agree to, uh, today he filed a motion, uh, he filed a response to that, and then he also filed a motion in the same document, uh, to enforce what he calls his, his proposed settlement, which is this stuff that's not part of the terms of the agreement, so I'm preparing a response to that, I'll get that filed by the end of the week, and, um, and we'll let you put the judge in. Any questions?
So meantime, he just keeps billing us, y'all keep, you're gonna keep billing us, you're gonna keep working on the case.
Well, I, I don't think...
We wanted to cease that thing, we're working on it, I'm not trying to bash you, but, when, when is this thing gonna end? We're working on it, do you listen?
Listen, answer.
Aye, well, I will believe it.
As far as the attorney states that he's billing, with my argument, he has, he's not entitled to that, because it's unnecessary work. He's taking something that's simple, cut and dry, is complicated, and he's complicating it for his own benefit.
Yeah, no doubt about that. So, question is, uh, how are we standing on the dispatch, are we paying him that?
Nothing, it's the same thing, he, he, he wanted to, he had it.
Okay, so, no, nobody's been paying nobody, okay?
We're, we're ready to pay, and we just gave him the cooperative.
Yeah, we approved that, and we wanted, we wanted this taken care of, we wanted it in November, and we did, so I think we're all in, now, now that's agreeing on that, we want it done, so, but it's, it's...
Question, what's gonna make him cooperate?
The judge.
They're on the judge.
Right, thank you.
How long, how long can we be up here? Just, just forever?
Not, not, that's why I'm getting my, my response out this week, is, uh, push this forward, and everything that they're ready for the judge, take a look at it, make a decision. And then once it's been judged, hands on, get, I think it is, but, he wants to take something with him, not just with the bill.
Offer like that, they'll have a statute of limitations?
Pardon me?
Does, that vote for that settlement, does it have a statute of limitations at all? I mean, surely, three years.
I know, yeah.
Five years, two?
I'd like to say, uh, sorry for my frustration, Dale, keep up the good work, appreciate you, uh, we just created this thing here.
I'm sorry, I am.
We have to do all of that, yeah. Any others who need to bring, if there's none, I'll have a motion to adjourn.